All right, AGP, when you are ready, I am ready.
We need one more council member to join.
Okay.
Devices are rolling and the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. It is Tuesday, August 24th, 2021. It's 5:30 PM. This is the regular meeting of the City of Morro Bay City Council. This meeting is being held via teleconference. Pursuant to Executive Order Number N-08-21 issued by Governor Newsom on June 11th of 2021, this meeting will be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on Cable Channel 20 and streamed on the city website. Please be advised that pursuant to the executive order and to ensure the health and safety of our public by limiting human contact that could spread the COVID-19 virus, the Veterans Hall will not be open for this meeting. Thank you very much. We will be giving you instructions on how to either call in or link into our Zoom link for public comment. That will be on the screen when the time is appropriate for that. With that, I will ask the clerk if she could establish a quorum for us this evening. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Addis?
Here.
Councilmember Barton has not joined quite yet. Councilmember Heller?
Here.
And Mayor Heading.
And present, we do have a quorum. I will go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask that, in your own way, you will continue to remember Councilmember Davis and his family for their great loss. We miss him greatly. And also, if you'll remember the folks in Afghanistan that are struggling to get to safety. It's a tragic situation, but we do want to remember them. So let's just go ahead and take a moment of silence, please. And thank you very much for that. And if we could have the flag. Councilmember Heller, would you mind leading us this evening in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir? I'd appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. I do appreciate that. And I'll ask our city attorney, Chris Newmeyer, do we have any closed session reports, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. No closed session items to report tonight.
Great, thank you, Chris. Good to see you this evening as well. And we'll go ahead and move to mayor and council members' reports. Councilmember Heller, would you like to lead us off this evening, sir?
Sure. I would like to recognize an amazing resident here in Morro Bay who has consistently picked up trash around the Embarcadero and around town, spends several hours every day, I believe, doing that. This is Helen Beard. She's been actively involved, as far as I know, for several years doing this. She routinely communicates her findings to our city manager, Scott Collins, and she's the eyes and ears of the trash situation in Morro Bay and a remarkable resident. I can't thank her enough for the time that she puts in and the information that she relays. So I want to recognize her tonight, Helen Beard. Thank you so much for all your work with respect to trash in the beautiful community of Morro Bay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
The other announcement I would like to make, if I might, Mayor?
Absolutely.
Sorry to talk over you there for a minute.
No, don't worry.
Many of you know about the many of you know about the event scheduled for September 11th at the Community Center, commemorating the 50th birthday of the formal founding of modern Morro Bay by Franklin Riley. The event is still scheduled on the 11th from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. Due to COVID-19, we have moved it outside, so it'll be right in front of the building. We hope you will attend. It's going to be an outstanding event. We're going to recognize the Morro Bay Police Department for all of their work during the pandemic and during the year of doing a great job of protecting us. We're also going to recognize the Morro Bay retired Fire Chief, Chief Knuckles, and honoring him for all of his work in the last eight and a half years. So we think it's going to be an outstanding event. We're unveiling an original painting of the city of Morro Bay that was commissioned by Morro Bay Beautiful. This artist does visions of cities around the world, and we're honored and excited that Morro Bay Beautiful has retained this artist to do a painting. He's also known as a puzzle artist, so the original artwork will be available in the form of puzzles at this event. This is the Saturday after Labor Day from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Community Center, and I hope all of you will join us for cake and ice cream for honoring these individuals who have served our community for so long and for the unveiling of the artwork, and maybe you want to buy a puzzle or two. So please attend if you can. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Hey, thank you, Councilmember Heller. Thanks for recognizing Ms. Beard. She does a fantastic job, and I appreciate that. And looking forward to the event myself. I'll be there. And sounds fantastic. Councilmember Addis, any announcements, please?
Great. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure. I do have one question, though, for Councilmember Heller before my announcements. If folks want to buy a puzzle and they are not able to make the event, is there an opportunity?
Absolutely. We will be transmitting information on the city website and all over the place on how people can buy puzzles if they're not there. So we definitely have that covered. Thank you for asking that.
Thank you. And my only announcement is that school's back in in Morro Bay. Delmar, as well as Morro Bay High, were back in as of Thursday. So I'm sure people have seen kids walking to school and buses and parents dropping off. And school is in person, even though kids are wearing masks. But we're all super excited that our students are back. And with our students coming back, that will mean that Friday Night Lights, football, and water polo, and all of the school sports are coming back. So if you could be careful on the roads, watching out for kids, and certainly patronizing the schools and their fundraisers, that would be amazing.
Fantastic news. Good to have our kids back in school. Appreciate that. Councilmember Barton, do you have any announcements for us?
Sorry, I forgot to switch off my mute. No, I do not have any announcements.
Okay, thanks so much. And you got it right this time. We heard you loud and clear. Thank you. You know, I don't know. I hate to start again, you know, with the whole COVID reports, but I just think it's so important for our community folks that I do want to bring you the information because it's it's just not great news at this time with regard to case rates in San Luis Obispo County. This is data as of today, 8/24, as reported by our San Luis Obispo County Department of Public Health. And this is on readyslow.org, the website. We currently have accumulated 460 new cases just since Friday. They're only reporting twice a week now, Tuesdays and Fridays, and cases again are plus 460 just since the last report on Friday. We have 279 deaths, unfortunately, in our county. 55 individuals are in the hospital now. That's significant. Those numbers are comparable to last December, January. And we have 16 in ICU due to COVID. And the Delta variant is increasing rapidly in our county, as you can see on the graphics on readyslow.org. The Delta variant is much more virulent or pathologic or disease-producing than the other forms of COVID. It concentrates in the lung and in the nasal passages and is probably 50 times more easily transmitted from one individual to another. And so thusly, the significance of this variant and the increase that we're seeing in our county as well, it is much more morbid in terms of disease, ability to produce disease, including hospitalization and death, again, primarily in unvaccinated individuals. Since January, in our county, we have about 98.5% of the cases just since January have only occurred in unvaccinated individuals. That's 98.5% in unvaccinated. Our hospitalizations, almost 98%, are in unvaccinated patients, not vaccinated patients. And the death rate is 99.2%. Of the deaths we've had since January are in unvaccinated individuals. If you're listening or hearing a trend, the issue is this. If you're unvaccinated, you are highly susceptible to not only transmitting, but receiving the disease, having morbidities, including hospitalization and death, and severe illness secondary to COVID-19. Our case rate in January was 43. As of today, it's 40, trending right back to where we were in January. Our positivity rate is 8.2 in January and 8.4 as of this week, trending right back to where we were in January. We had 698 cases new in July in San Luis Obispo County. And so far in August through the 24th, 2,436 new cases. So that's a fourfold increase in just less than a month in our county. In our county, 60% of the individuals across the county are fully vaccinated. 68% are partially vaccinated. The sad news is that 32% of our population is unvaccinated at this time. The third dose booster is available for immunocompromised patients. It is recommended, and there's information on readyslow.org. If you've received the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, there's special information related to that on readyslow.org. But if you have questions about the need, if you're immunocompromised, to receive the third dose of the vaccine, please go to that site or talk to your family physician about the need for that. I do believe personally that there will be a general recommendation for the public soon to actually receive a booster dose six to eight months after receiving either Pfizer or Moderna. And there'll be recommendations that will be similar for the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. Yesterday, Pfizer received the full FDA approval for their vaccine. So if you've been concerned about that because it had emergency use authorization and you did not want to get it, that no longer is an excuse not to get the vaccine. It is fully approved by the FDA as of yesterday. To be clear, we are moving back to where we were sadly. And personally, as a clinician and one that cares about our public health for our community, once again, you need to get vaccinated. And if you're concerned about that, talk to your healthcare practitioner about the advantages of that and also the possible concerns that you may have regarding that. Currently, this rise of the Delta variant, this rise in our case rate and death rate and co-morbidity is associated with this is due to unvaccinated individuals. I highly recommend, and it's not a mandate in our county that you wear masks if you're going to be indoors with other groups of individuals that you socially distance, like we did in the past, and you have continued to do frequent hand washing. It is not recommended that you gather in large groups for large group get-togethers, even outside if you've been vaccinated or if you're unvaccinated. Large groups being greater than anywhere from 10 to 100. The same concerns we had previously with COVID exist now with those kinds of gatherings. And so get vaccinated, wear a mask, socially distance, be compliant. And if you have symptoms, please get tested. The information about test sites is on readyslow.org. It is rich with information. If you have any questions at all, please call your personal physician for further information. Again, sorry to bring you maybe not so great news, but it is the truth, and we do really care about your health and want to make sure we have a healthy community. So thank you with that. That ends my report, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Scott Collins, city manager. I wanted to announce a few quick items. On September 8th, Wednesday, at 6:00 PM on Zoom, the city will be hosting a Morro Bay community forum about the Morro Bay Power Plant stacks titled "Facts and Figures." So we'll have presenters from Vistra Corp., who owns that facility, the California Department of Toxic Substance Control, Slow County Air Pollution Control District, and City of Morro Bay staff. And the topics are the current conditions of the stacks, as well as consideration for the future of the stacks. So again, that's Wednesday, September 8th at 6:00 PM, and the link is on the city website for the Zoom. Next up, we will be releasing the parking study from Walker Consultants, who did a study last summer in Fall. Look for that on the city website probably Thursday or Friday this week. And then we are still taking community input through our Polco survey about city goals. You can find that just by doing a quick Google search of Polco, P-O-L-C-O, Morro Bay, and that'll take you to that website. And if you've never used the service before, it takes about five to 10 seconds to create a login for that. And last but not least, we are hosting the community goals workshop for September 29th on Wednesday at 4:00 PM, where council will deliberate about the goals and actions for the next year and a half. Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you, Scott. I appreciate that. That ends our reports for this evening. We'll move to public comment. This is general public comment for items on the agenda for which you cannot stay and comment on at a later date. Or if you would like to comment on anything regards to our city, please feel free to do so now. This is, again, general public comment for items on the agenda for which you can't stay and comment on later and/or any other general comments you'd like to make regarding our city. And with that, Highland, I will go ahead and open up public comments, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It looks like we have Betty Winholz raising her hand.
Great. Welcome, Betty.
Thank you. This is Betty Winholz. I want to speak to you about SB 9 and SB 10. I know you'll be talking about the California cities later, but this is separate from that, and I'm surprised they're not on your September agenda. Maybe that's because they'll be voted on in the state senate before then. But I'm very concerned about 9, and I'm very concerned about 10. As you know, one of them passed the Assembly today and is headed to the Senate. The League of California Cities is on a watch for 10, or at least it was of yesterday, and is against number 9, I believe. And under those circumstances, I believe the mayor stated at a previous council meeting he could at least write to our representatives on something that the league has approved. I would hope that the council would either agendize or use tonight as an emergency meeting, in case the vote comes up sooner, to say that, yes, we want to be on record as against to number 9 and number 10. Number 9 takes away the city's right to, or quite a few rights, in terms of planning and what's allowed, that the state is telling us what we have to do. And the other one not only extends that, but also takes away the people's right to have initiatives that are not overridden by the city council. And I hope that the city council would support the people's rights to have initiative and not support something that would overrule the public's vote. So I'm encouraging you to address both SB 9 and SB 10 tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Next public comment, please, Highland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do not have any more raised hands in the queue.
Thank you so much. With that, I'll go ahead and I will close general public comment and address Ms. Winholz. I do believe I do have the authority to follow League of Cities guidance. And Mr. Collins, remind me, I'm trying to remember if we did take a position supporting League of Cities recommendation and sent a letter?
Yes, on Senate Bill 9, we did that. And Senate Bill 10, my understanding, and I'm doing a little bit more research today, is that what's made it out of the Assembly includes a provision that the locals opt into that provision and that it's not something that would be forced by the state. So I'm doing a little bit more research on that point of view. So if it's up to the cities if they want to adopt it or not, then I think we're maintaining that local control. So it's something I'll look into further and can get back to you. If, in fact, it obliterates our local control, then we can simply add on to Senate Bill 9 opposition.
Great. Thank you for that. And thank you, Ms. Winholz, for bringing that up. With that, Councilmember Heller, I do see a hand. Is that just, do you need to put it down? Or did you have a question?
Oh, I actually raised it on purpose, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
For a change. I'm wondering if we should announce the September 3rd deadline for the application for the open council seat or not at this meeting?
Consider it just an extension and go ahead of your report. That would be fine.
Okay. I just wanted to let everyone know in the public that September 3rd, a week from Friday, is the deadline for applying for the open council seat due to Councilmember Davis. This is passing. All the information about the application is on the city website. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks for reminding us. I appreciate that. With that, that brings us to our consent agenda. This is items A1 through A6. I'll go ahead and open up public comment for items A1 through A6. This is public comment for our consent agenda. Public comment is now open. And Highland, do we have anybody in the queue?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
All righty. With that, we'll close public comment, bring it back to council, and ask if there are any items to pull. Please note them. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the consent agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Councilmember Addis to move items A1 through A6, seconded by Mayor Heading. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. That completes the consent agenda for this evening. Our first business item is item C-1. This is the review of our water reclamation facility, quarterly update report, and approval of contract amendments. And I believe I'm turning it over to our program manager, Kyle Rohr, and possibly Mr. Leibig. So Kyle, welcome.
Thanks, Mayor, and members of city council. Kyle Rohr, engineering. Have a brief presentation, and then we can go to Q and A. I'll attempt to show my screen. Can you see my screen?
Yes, sir. Terrific.
The recommendation here is just to receive the quarterly update report before 2021 and provide input as you see fit. So today's discussion is kind of a rerun, but I will go through it again. I gave you a heads up during the Q3 quarterly report summary that we had Q4 numbers underway for you to kind of get out in front of some things that had come up to adjust the baseline budget. I'm sorry, not the baseline budget, but the reconciliation. So as of the end of Q4, which, as you know, is the 30th of June of 2021, the current project estimate for the Q4 reconciliation is at 144,674,877 versus 125,941, the baseline budget established when this program was first developed. Just as a recap from the action I shared with you during my Q3 remarks, the Q3 project estimate was at 138,591. This increase that you're seeing here at 144.7 is increases due to amendments and change orders into the WRF, which is the Water Treatment Plant Facility itself, additional archaeological investigation costs for the conveyance, additional program management costs for construction management, permitting, funding, pre-treatment support, additional hydrogeological permitting and design costs for the recycled water facilities element of the program, as well as additional construction contingency to all project elements for issues that we see coming down the road. The schedule remains intact, the overall work project, so the completion of the infrastructure necessary to meet your requirements under the regional water quality control boards. Time schedule order is still intact, July 5th, 2022, 238 days ahead of the February 28th, 2023 TSO compliance statement mandated by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. This is provided in the report as are the rest of the tables that follow here. It's just a summary of where we started in the baseline at 125,9 back in Q4, fiscal 1718, and we are at 144,674. Expenditures to date, when we were last together, the total, excuse me, total project expenditures of the Q3 were right around $42 million. As of the end of Q4, we're at 55.4, which is about 13.3. And they're broken down, as you can see in the table to the right, across the various project elements. The last time we were together, we were talking about how we are bothering in terms of planned expenditures. As of Q3, we weren't spending against the line, if you will, the burn rate that we would have liked to have seen for various reasons, including delays in constructing the treatment plant, as well as delays in getting the conveyance contract underway. I warned you that Q4 would see a spike. And as you can see, in June 2021, we had quite a significant spike. So we will be trending up to meet the projections that will map against this chart here. I can say, as an aside, well, we have in excess of $88 million planned spend for the work program. That's all soft costs and infrastructure, hard infrastructure. The future, the rest of the fiscal, or I'm sorry, fiscal 1, fiscal 2021, 22, it looks like we're somewhere around a $70 million spend because we spent a little bit more at the end of Q4 than we anticipated. Either Sarah or myself can talk later if you like. The milestone schedule has only changed where those arrows indicated, where we extended the substantial and final completion dates of the conveyance facilities, I think by 10 days each. Again, this is at the June 30th of 2021. We continue to work with the conveyance contractor to address issues that are coming up in the field, and I'm prepared to talk about those if you have questions regarding that. Again, this is updated quarterly, so as things change, you'll see updates as necessary to the conveyance as well as the other work program elements. So something a little more on this report. There's been quite a few delays at the state regional, I'm sorry, the State Water Quality Control Board Division of Financial Assistance, which is the group that administers the state revolving loan fund. We're anticipating that we could possibly be faced with delays in reimbursement under the SRF program. the SRF program. Because of that, we're, Coroll is working with the city staff to figure out the timing and magnitude of these temporary shortballs. We're looking at monthly projections, trying to map them as well as we can with project schedules. We're also working really closely with WIFIA and SRF to figure out what is the best strategy in terms of drawing against these various programs to minimize shortballs or eliminate them as possible. So once we get through this analysis, we'll figure out, we'll support your working with the city financial advisor to figure out what the most appropriate path forward is just in case we do experience shortballs in revenues because of delays from our reimbursement. Couple slides on trees. Been questions over the last couple quarterly reports regarding what's going on in the trees, and Greg can talk more on this if there's more questions. But just really quickly, and it's important to share with everyone listening, the coastal development permit has allowed 27 trees to be removed. To date, 27 have been removed. The city arborist did a step to figure out more trees that may possibly need to be taken out because of the conveyance project element and came up with potentially 36 more. We are working with the conveyance contractor now to confirm that number. You know, these are trees that may need to be moved because of heavy equipment that has to go in and install the pipeline itself. Once the final number of trees to be removed is established, we're going to request an approval to amend coastal development permit. And actually, since I've developed this slide and since the end of quarter four, the Coastal Commission has approved removal of additional trees. Important to note, neither the Coastal Development Permit itself nor the city code has any requirements to replace, you know, the 27 trees removed for the conveyance construction. The Coastal Commission may recommend, as is the case with the last group of trees that we requested, they may recommend or require, as a condition of the amendment to that permit, on the planning of replacement for the additional trees. The last request we just received approval for recommends replacement, but does not require it. So regardless of all these requirements, whether they are requirements or recommendations, the city is proposing to replace the trees removed on a one-to-one basis over a five-year period at a rate of up to 15 trees per year, likely beginning in the fall of 2022. And to implement this, the city was planning on collaborating with various volunteer groups to implement these efforts. And again, Greg can probably speak to that in more detail should there be questions. This report was presented by me a week ago to CFAC, and here's some of the key feedback, actually the most important items that we received for comments. There was quite a bit of discussion on whether the cost of Amendment Six and Amendment Six for the design build agreement with Oberlin Constructors, which is the FELONs Black and Beach team building the treatment plant, and Amendment Two, which is Waterworks Engineering, which is the design engineers for the conveyance. The council has, you have before you two amendments for approval. The question is, do those amendments fall within Q4 reconciled budget that I just shared with you? And they do, they were anticipated well ahead of this point. They've been anticipated. And actually, the Amendment Six to the design build agreement for the work that negotiated and agreed to change orders came in below the place holder that we are holding in the contingency buckets. Secondly, there's concerns regarding pending change orders conveyance element. So there are a number of open change orders to the conveyance part of this project that are still in negotiation. We believe that the amount of contingency we have in the program right now can take care of those, because again, we had anticipated them. But until we negotiate the final amounts with Anvil Construction for those conveyance chain orders, I can't give you a definite number. And there was also discussion about the concerns regarding the schedule for completion of the recycled water facilities, a timeline for delivery of portable water. Again, a great comment, great concern. I know we're all in, we're in a horrible drought, we need the water as soon as we can. The timeline that is in the quarterly report and in my presentation here for consumption of the recycled element is still current, as reflected in the report itself. There are some, there's a couple of issues out on that element that could extend the timeline. But at this point, the December 2023 date is the best we have, and at this point, it is still supportive. And that concludes formal presentation of my item, and happy to entertain questions.
Thanks, Kyle. Appreciate your presentation. Maybe I'll start with a couple of questions, then allow other council members to ask questions. The first is the amount of requested PCO increase for the WRF portion of the project is $132,117. And in your staff report on page 89, it's obvious that the vast majority of that $832,000 is due to the soil slip, and you do give an explanation on page, I believe, 90 of the staff report. But could you, for the public who hasn't had a chance to read this, could you elaborate on what that issue exactly was, why the city has exposure for that, and what the magnitude initially was anticipated, and how you ended up here with this amount?
Yes, I can. And I'm just noticing the light is really bad on me. I look like I'm in the witness protection program, so let me get a little bit of light on here.
I was going to report you, but...
Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, so we're talking about PCO number 92. So we had a soil slip out there in, I don't remember, I don't remember the date of the first soil slip. But in January, we had a major rainstorm that created another soil slip. This is, could be a really long answer, but I'll tell you that both the city construction management team and the FELONs Black and Beach contracting team did a really good job getting together, and each provided geotechnical support to figure out what happened and more importantly, how to fix it. That investigation, multiple investigations, including sinking someone 60 feet down in the ground in a bucket to take samples, just talking about it gives me anxiety. But those investigations ran about $300,000 or so. So this $825,000 number includes all the investigative work that had to be done to get to a point where the contractor can figure out how to fix it. You mentioned the funding element. We were carrying approximately $1.2 million for this issue. And so the 825, while it is absolutely unquestionably a lot of money, it's less than the 1.2 we carried. In terms of who's responsible, I don't know if that's the question, or how we allocated responsibility and ownership of the event. In very, very rare cases, will your contractor assume subsurface risk? And if you do pass, try to pass that risk on, the premium you pay for constructions could also affect the project. So this is on the city's dime, unfortunately. It's according to the design build agreement, which again, is pretty standard that subsurface risk is a challenge of the owner. I will say that again, and I said at the beginning, I'll say it again, is that the design build team worked really well with the city, and it was a good, solid academic process to figure out what's going on and how to fix it. And I think the negotiations were about as best they could be under the conditions.
And our legal department was extensively involved in the contractual review of potential exposure for the city, is that correct?
Actually, from the very beginning, from the first soil slip, yeah, we're involved. It's the same issue. I mean, the first soil slip was prior to my re-involvement in the project, but yes, the city attorney's interpretation of the contract and the city's risk exposure was consistent with where we ended up.
Okay, good. Question on amendment number two for Waterworks Engineers. The delta on that is $168,915 increase, and you outline on page number 92, more or less, the scope for that. The question I have is, do you have any figures for the overall anticipated initial budget for Waterworks? And can we expect future amendments potentially?
Sure, I understand the question, Ari.
So did we have an initial estimate of what the agreement overall may have cost or would cost for their portion of the project? Have we anticipated a certain amount in total that would come, obviously via our budget cycle, as an amendment each budget year, correct?
I see what you're asking. Yes, that was included and anticipated. The contract value started off at about 194, as you can see in the staff report on page 91.
Right.
Sizable amendment, amendment number one. But the 2.2 where we currently are, based on the activities we're doing, we don't see at this point the need for additional amendment for Waterworks. The big pieces are really that California State 16 redesign and additional services during construction.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to get a sense of any surprises or anticipated future costs associated with that that might be concerning.
Mayor, not a percent.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. My, let's see, this may be a Sarah question. I don't know, are you going to do further explanation of the bridge funding? Or is it, do you want us to ask questions about that now?
I'm not going to do any more explanation.
Okay, is Sarah with us? Sarah, are you with us tonight? There, Sarah. Hi, Sarah. How are you? Ms. Winholt sent in an email citing some things that I think need clarification with regard to the need for bridge funding. I know that, and thank you for meeting with the subcommittee, Councilmember Heller and myself, to elaborate on that need, and we've talked about it a number of times. But if you wouldn't mind just explaining the WIFIA program and the drawdown associated with that, the SRF program, and what potential I think is a real issue, and that is the delay in the ability to draw down those funds, and that really through the bridge loan, we're not seeking to increase the amount we're borrowing, but we're just bridging the gap in timeline, if I'm correct? And you can probably explain it better than I, but I just want to make sure that that clarification is there, because I think it was a good question that she brought up.
Certainly, and thanks for the question. And I think you gave a quite a good introductory explanation, and I'll expand on it a little bit. So you are correct, the WIFIA program has its own dispersment process for loan proceeds, and then the SRF program has a similar process, but the timelines are quite different in terms of how long it's taking WIFIA versus SRF to respond to the dispersment request from the city. So we have received a number of WIFIA dispersment requests to date, and on average, we're getting, so we expend the funds and then we complete forms, just so the public has a sense of how this works, to submit to WIFIA or SRF with all of the required documentation. Staff at those agencies reviews all of that documentation, and then once approved, it goes to their finance team to disperse the funds to the city to essentially reimburse the cash that we fronted for that portion of the project work. So that process is working very smoothly for the WIFIA funding, and we're getting paid in roughly four to six weeks from the time that we submit the dispersment request. On the SRF side, we have not yet sought reimbursement for the construction loan, which was just recently approved, but we have been seeking reimbursement for the planning loan, and that has been a very lengthy process. And we've had some preliminary conversations with our SRF representatives that their baseline for their reimbursement is 90 days, but they've been seeing that prolonged for a variety of reasons, including the COVID-19 pandemic and delays associated with that on their end. They've got a new financial system, and so they, we hope that they would reimburse us within 90 days, but that can even be variable. So part of due diligence that Kyle mentioned that we're undertaking is different scenarios. And so we're looking at the city's cash position alongside the project status, what we can charge to WIFIA, what we can charge to the SRF loan, and how long we think it's going to take us to get reimbursed from each funding source. So you are correct, it is essentially the interim financing question on whether the city will need to pursue that is entirely related to how long it takes us to receive reimbursement specifically for the SRF costs.
So it's not additional money that's needed to service the debt, but it's really a time use of money issue with regard to cash flow. From what I understand, we have over $30 million in cash, but we're going to draw down a significant amount of money over the next 12 to 18 months. And because of delays in SRF reimbursements, there might be a need to advance ourselves some bridge loan money, but pay that back once we get the SRF funding paid. Is that correct?
That is a possibility. We're also looking at, you know, whether there's any way to avoid that need, and that's part of the analysis that we're doing now, and so we'll come back to you when we have a better sense of that, and hopefully some more information from SRF as well about their process.
I guess I should have asked it maybe more simply, and that is, we're not actually borrowing more money because we're going to incur more debt above and beyond what we have assumed in the past.
The project budget is still the 144 number that you described currently, and so the interim financing discussion is not related to that number changing. It is a time use of money question. And so, yeah, we're looking at whether that's going to be necessary for the city, but we want to be prepared in the event that it is necessary, because it will take some time. We're told it will take roughly 90 days to get that bridge financing in place, if in fact it's needed.
And we may not need it, right?
That's what we're evaluating.
Right, exactly. Okay, great, thanks. Thanks for letting me take you through that. I wanted to make sure that the community was clear that it's not securing a higher amount of debt because the budget has gone up, but it is bridging basically a gap in timing of receipt of money from one of the lending agencies that we have, basically.
Correct.
And all of this, what we've been talking about tonight, both Kyle and Sarah, I'll ask you, in terms of if these amendments are approved, there'll be no anticipated increase in water or sewer rates to our in-line users. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all the questions I have. I will look for hands and see if there are other questions. Okay, ah, there's Councilmember Heller. I see your hand. Yes, sir, please.
Hands raised.
Got it.
One question for Sarah while you're still there. Do you have any idea what the rate will be for this? rate will be for this bridge financing, a range of rates, or is that too soon to talk about?
I think it's too soon at this point. But we have been told that the rates are still very favorable. So we wouldn't anticipate that the cost of interim financing would be insurmountable. But that we wouldn't anticipate that being a major concern.
Okay. And then just for the public, this fiscal year will be the greatest amount of money that we're going to spend on the program. I think it's projected to be $88 million. So this obviously makes this kind of financing possibly necessary. I just wanted to make sure the public understands that, that we will be spending a lot of money to complete this program. That's all I have for you, Sarah. Thank you very much for that. The rest of my questions have to do with the quarterly report. Let's see here. So I'm looking at this, Kyle, what looks like the WIFIA project, if we approve this amendment, will go up to $76.7 million. That's per page 89. On page 160, the current budget for the program is 77.67. So it's looking like there's a delta right now of a million dollars between what our current budget is for the sewer project and what we're actually encumbering. Is that a fair statement?
Let me, Councilmember Heller, get to the page. I'm scrolling madly.
Oh, well, that's all right. Take your time. So page 160 is where the budget is kept, I think, of the staff report.
Getting there. Fair with me. Page 160, I'm sorry, Councilmember Heller.
Yeah, 160 of the staff report. Is that how you find things?
Yeah, page 160 of the staff report, that's.
You got it, Jeff. That's the one, yeah.
Is that it? Oh, the staff report, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, with the different numbers.
Yeah.
It's a little hard to.
That's all right. This will be a lot more fun.
I should have warned you.
But I can answer your question. The question's yes, I believe. But I just wanted to make sure that.
It's the budget review summary page, Kyle.
It's the budget review summary, okay.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding these numbers. I think that's right, that it's about a million dollars difference.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks for digging that out. I appreciate.
I'm sorry about that.
That's not a problem. Let's see here. So the soil slip, I still have some questions about that. My first question is this, and it's kind of a comment. I'm not sure that I agree with you that we should have taken all liability for the site on the city as opposed to making it part of the bid process. That's not really the best way to do things, in my opinion. I think we're paying the price for it now. That's a comment. My question is this. This, so the site work was done, if I understand this correctly, or this portion of?
Yes.
The site was designed and completed by the design build contractor, is that right? Okay. And then there was a failure because of excessive rains? I'm sorry, what'd you say, Kyle?
I'm sorry to interrupt you, sir. The site work was completed that needed to be done in order to construct the facility itself. The soil slip itself, there was site work, quote unquote, done after that first soil slip. It's a different kind of site work. There was like a, there was some V-ditching done to manage the flow of water and some other movement of dirt. I am not a geotechnical engineer, but there was some site work done after the first slide.
Okay, so that part where the slide was, the work was not completed there?
Well, where the slide happened is actually above where the treatment plan is being built. So when you talk about site work, it's generally in preparation to build the foundation and to build the structures. The slip is actually on a hill that's north of the treatment plan itself, necessarily an area where they have to do, quote unquote, site work, other than, you know, maybe managing drainage and fencing and possibly planting. So I can say that, in answer to your question, work had been completed for the facility itself when this occurred.
Okay, so I'm still not clear, though. Where the slip was, was the work completed there prior to the slip, the V-ditches or whatever?
I guess what I'm trying to.
Site work or civil work, whatever you call it, wasn't there some work that had to be done in that area?
Not where the slip occurred.
Yeah, or not? Does the soil slip generate the work as the work?
Yeah, the slip was quite a bit north of the footprint of the treatment plan.
Okay, but let's.
It is essentially, if you will, the slide.
Let's just talk about this, let's just talk about the slopes for a minute. Was there work planned at that slope where the slip was as part of the project?
Yes.
Or did the slip, the slip create additional scope that had to be performed in that area?
Both. There was, there was site work that had to be done, having to do with that slope, based on the geotechnical information provided to the contractor for both the development period. That was.
That's my question. So this is my concern about the way the contract is structured, and our attorneys have addressed it, and how it's been addressed by the city. It sounds to me like we are liable in perpetuity for similar events on this property that we bought. Is that fair to say? Or do you not agree with that?
I would rather not answer that, as I'm not an attorney. But I can.
Yeah, but it seems, is there a chance that this kind of an event, soil slip, could happen again in another area, or maybe even in the same area, and the city would be on the, and the city would be on the hook?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I had a problem with.
I will say, let me caveat that a little bit, that for those improvements that the contractor has done in order to build the facility itself.
You're talking about the flat, where the buildings are?
That liability still rests with the design build contractor in terms of errors and omissions.
Okay.
If you're talking about another slide on that same note, the city is the same.
If I could just make one comment, Councilmember Heller and Manager Aurora, I don't think that the city is in a position to make any firm conclusions on some future event that we don't know the details about, and whether we would or would not be responsible for it. So I want to be clear, as city attorney, that the city right now is not taking any position that if there's some future soil slip, that the city is responsible for it. We would need to review the conditions of that future event, which we don't have the details on, to determine whether we have any responsibility. So I think Manager Aurora spoke in error in regards to some future event.
I'd like to thank the city attorney for that. That's why I'm so nervous about getting out of my lane there. Thanks, Chris. I appreciate it.
Okay. The, so the amendment to the wastewater engineering agreement, and this is another question, I hate to throw it at you, I should have looked it up, but I can't always find the numbers I need. So what was the original budget for designing the pipeline?
Actually, I do have that.
Part of the program? I'm just curious. The original contract was 1.354. Know what the budget was? And are we under budget or over budget?
We are over. The original pipeline design contract value was $1.4 million, and we're over by at this point. If you approve amendment tonight, it'd be over by, if you math in my head, $850,000.
Okay. Can you tell me why we're over? I mean, would it have been possible to do the archaeological work and have those findings in place before this project was put in, for the bidding, for the pipeline portion of the project was put out on the street?
Um, not.
Is that what I'm asking?
I do. And that, not in its entirety. I think, you know, when we originally put this out for design, we did not know nearly as much as we do now, based on the archaeological investigations. It had to be done concurrently with the advancement of the project. I can't speak to the rationale of amendment number one, Councilmember Heller, because I wasn't involved in that. But I can most certainly give you the rationale.
Okay.
But I suspect it is because of the archaeological mitigation and the redesign.
Yeah, I just didn't know if that was ever done in advance, or if that's done as you go, and you kind of discover things, and then change the scope.
It's both. We know, we, you know, we have an idea in advance of where the potential areas could be. But unfortunately, until you start getting into it, that's why we have archaeological monitors on site and probably provided. So we can.
Okay. The other question is, the recycled portion of the project is a year behind the baseline schedule. Do you have any plans to accelerate the schedule, or get it back so that it's completed sooner than the end of Q2 2023?
I really appreciate that question, because we have had meetings the last three days trying to do just that. We don't have a solution to beat that schedule. And to be completely honest, right now, we're scrambling to make sure we make that schedule. I always like to give you a heads up. And we're really at, we're really at the mercy of what happens with the findings of the pilot wells, and the monitoring wells, to make sure that where we're putting those wells is technically, technologically feasible and appropriate. We learned that we may have to have monitoring wells for each of the injection wells. There's so much that, so much at port right now between that element of the project and the regulators, who apparently this hasn't been done. And so the regulators are, we're working with them to educate, we're educating each other. But we are trying to look for solutions to, at the very least, keep on that schedule, and in the best case scenario, accelerated. We've done some work already with respect to mitigations that we do for archaeological concerns, and have come up with alternatives that are being looked at to expedite, if you will, the archaeological investigation part of it, which is potentially going to delay because of shippo. So we're looking at acceleration there. We're also developing a really good relationship with the folks at the regulator community to try to figure out how we can make it go faster. And we also have another idea in terms of construction contracting, how we could possibly short circuit the actual design and construction of the infrastructure that goes into that element. And I'm not liberating to say what that is just yet, but we're looking at some ideas.
Okay. I appreciate all the efforts you're making. It's a tough issue, I understand that.
Yeah.
What is your expectation at this point that you'll have the findings that you need from the injection wells? What kind of, roughly, what are you looking at to see that information?
In terms of timeline?
Yeah.
So I had my team answer that question specifically in writing. And it would really be amazing if I could scramble and find it while I'm continuing to talk.
Well, you don't have to pull it up right now. It's kind of.
Yeah, but we do have that information. I want to say it's spring 2022.
Okay.
Spring, the summer of 2022, we should have a pretty good handle on what's down there, and how good our well design plans are, and if we have to engage GSI to find another room. I mean, our fingers are a little crossed, and we don't have to go looking for more space in the easements or additional property. And we're doing our best to keep that off the table.
Okay, that's great. That's close enough for me. I appreciate that. I have a question about trees. Should I talk to Greg about that now, Mayor, or?
Absolutely. This is the time. You betcha.
Okay. Greg, you there?
Good evening, Councilmember.
Thank you so much for, hey, how you doing? Thank you so much for working on this issue. You know, it's an important one to me. And there are a lot of questions from the community about the trees that have been removed. And there still seems to be some confusion about it. So anything that you could do, or other staff members could do to clarify that would be great. The questions I have about what you're proposing here in the one-to-one replacement concept is, is this one, the major vegetation policy asks for, in our municipal code asks for, in terms of what private property owners would be required to do if they were to remove a tree?
So yes, the major vegetation policy addresses what private property owners would need to do if they remove a tree, if they are permitted under the city's coastal development permit, which this project, as you know, is not. However, because we believe in ensuring that the city has a full canopy of trees, we are proposing to be in accordance with that policy anyway, and do a one-to-one replacement. That policy, there is some confusion, because it does ask for a two-to-one replacement, but that's if, if it's a five-gallon bucket. And we would be doing larger replacements than that. And then, in that case, the policy allows us to do a one-to-one replacement ratio.
Okay, and that agrees with the ordinance that we have in.
Yeah, the ordinance, that's the street tree section of the municipal code. And that relates to trees removed in the public right of way. And these trees, to my understanding, are all, or most if not all, on private property.
Okay. Do we have an ordinance about tree removal on private property?
I will let Scott Graham answer that, if he's available. I don't believe we do. I believe that's covered in the major vegetation policy.
Yeah, Councilmember Heller, we do have the major vegetation policy, which is where that's covered. It's an expansion. The major vegetation policy is adopted by resolution, and it's an expansion of the city's local plan policies related to major vegetation removal. So that's where that policy stems from, and provides a little more guidance as to what we're supposed to be doing when issuing CDPs for removal of major vegetation.
Okay, so the policy's enough to, you don't need the ordinance necessarily to enforce the terms of the policy, right?
Correct. It's a policy adopted by, I think, city council.
Okay, okay, great. That answers that. Thank you for that. The more clarification you can give the community on the trees, and, because we continue to get comments about trees that have been numbered up to 80, and I think you addressed that before, but maybe can clarify some of that, at some of these meetings, if you have a few minutes. And I think you've spoken clearly about the coastal development permit, and what they require, don't require. So those are my questions on that. Thank you, Mayor. Of course, I'll have a few comments when it comes time to that, but I don't want to hog up the whole meeting. So thank you, Mayor, for that time. And thank you, Greg, and Kyle, for addressing my questions.
Thanks, Councilmember Heller. Appreciate that. And Greg, is that a moon rock, or is that Morbay rock in the background? I'm curious.
That is a Morbay shot, hexylated in black and white, which is to my liking.
Very creative. We like to have a little levity during our meetings, and you've brought it this evening. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Further council member questions, please. Looking for hands. Seeing no raised hands. I will go ahead and open up public comment. This is public comment for item C-1 on the agenda this evening. Public comment is now open. And do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It looks like we have some raised hands here. First up, we have Carol Truesdale.
All righty. Welcome, Carol.
Hi, thank you, Mayor, and every council. I hope everybody's being safe under this pandemic situation. I have a couple of comments to make. It has always bothered me from the site that was selected. It's been a known slope site kind of issue, where landslides, we're on that property. But this is just for Kyle here. It's my understanding in your report, you said 27 trees when counting was 42 trees. So there's a disparity to what you said in the comment versus what I had been originally told and researched. And now that we're coming up with like 36 more trees, you know, Mother Nature, this is our lungs of our world out there are trees. And one can say I'm a tree hugger. of our world out there are trees. And one can say I'm a tree hugger, like Betty Winholz. I believe in Mother Nature very strongly, and I'm an environmentalist. So I would like the City Council to really think about putting a two-for-one for every tree that has been removed because of this huge project and step forward and make it two-for-one versus one. And then everybody knows that a bridge loan does have percentage ratios on it. And what is the cost and where, who will, where will the burden of the cost of the bridge loan for the percentage, is that going to go into us, ratepayers, or how is this all going to be handled? So those are my questions. Thank you, everybody, and please stay safe.
Thank you, Carol. We hope you're well and Larry is well. Thank you. Next public comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up next, we have Betty Winholz.
Welcome, Betty.
Thank you. This is Betty Winholz again. I appreciate Ms. Truesdale's comments. I was going to make the same comment about the bridge loan. If it's a loan, there's going to be interest, which is an additional cost, which was part of my comments to you. So I don't see it as, I understand that we're not quote increasing the cost of the project again, but we are having to cover the cost of the current project. And there is a cost to that if you're going to get another loan. And that was my concern about that. In terms of the change orders, I want to make clear, and maybe you could clarify, because I believe that the change orders we see tonight, which are over a million dollars, do not include an additional million dollars that was before PWA last week. So in truth, the project is going up $2 million because the change orders that we're seeing are not all that we know is happening. I think that was alluded to earlier. And I just want to correct a statement that I made in my email comment to you that we are doubling by having gone to the site and having to pay for the landslide, that that's not just a doubling of the cost of the price that we paid for this land, but it's actually quadrupling it. And I think that's another important point to bring out. I heard two things in the comments by our project manager, and one was that the project will be finished in 2022 ahead of time, but the injection wells, which are part of the project, really won't be finished until 2023. So the overall project really isn't being completed ahead of time, but perhaps on schedule and perhaps not, depending on how the well situation shakes out. And I'd like that affirmed or clarified, if you would. And regarding the number of trees, I'm not sure how the city stays at the 27 number when you can walk where the trees have been cut and you can count 42 stumps. So I think that kind of needs to be reconciled as well. And again, the idea of clear cutting the trees on Main Street and Morro Bay Boulevard and replacing them with these 80 trees is just unconscionable to me that that suggestion would have been made. You're making a situation worse instead of better by taking out mature trees. And for the reasons that were said earlier, that, you know, this, we're in a time of needing to retain our carbon sequestering and not increasing it, and that this is part of who Morro Bay is. That boulevard, when you're at the top of Morro Bay and looking down towards the ocean when those trees are blooming, that is an incredible definition of who Morro Bay is. And we are, we appreciate that.
You bet. Thank you. I have the next public comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not see any more raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and close public comment on item C-1, bring it back to council for further consideration. Couple of clarifying statements. The first, with regard to Ms. Winholz's comment regarding the bridge loan. Yes, the bridge loan interest rate, although we do not know what it is, will probably be slightly higher than the SRF rate, which was fortunately extremely low. However, it is replacement, it is a replacement fund, not additional funding. And yes, there will be a delta if we do go forward with that. And that will be brought to council in terms of consideration at a later date. So I just want to make sure that that was clarified as well. With regard to the comments regarding trees, Greg, did you want to offer any clarification or staff regarding the comment about 27 versus 42 stumps, your recommendation this evening and/or consideration for two-to-one replacement? And I believe tonight, you're just asking for direction to come back to us with a finalized plan, if I'm correct?
That's correct, Mayor. This is, this is in a very early stage, this replacement plan. We still do not know how many trees, how many more trees will be removed by the time this project is completed. And so what was presented tonight was very preliminary. My understanding is there may be some what look like stumps of trees on site. That doesn't necessarily mean that what was cut down meant the definition of a tree. It may have been a sort of bush or shrub. And Rob Liebig can speak to that. And then the other idea, I mean, two-to-one is certainly on the table. That would come at a considerable expense to the city. Planting one tree alone, if you include the purchase of the tree, the time spent planting it, as well as the site work that might need to be done to prepare the site to accept a tree successfully, and then also five years of watering, could be in the several of thousands per tree. So that's something that we would want to look at and be considered of. Rob, can you speak to the definition of a tree versus a shrub or bush?
The EIR coastal development permit had a requirement to trees that were greater than six inches, basically above five feet in height, ordinary breast height or something. I can't remember the exact term that is used in the tree vernacular. The construction management team did take photos of every stump along the conveyance system. I believe they did count 42 stumps. Viewing those pictures, many of those stumps are very weathered. So they were removed prior to this project going on, either by the property owner or because they had either fallen or were about to fall on the bike path. We can see stumps in those pictures that are outside of the fencing installed by the contractor. So they're well outside of their work area. So there's no doubt that there are 42 stumps out there. It's just that the contractor only removed 27 trees in accordance with the approved plans, and that's all they're asking to be paid for. If they had removed one tree additional, I can assure you that our contractor would be requesting payment for removal of additional trees. There are three additional trees near the excavation for the pipe bridge that have been removed with coastal commission's permission, additional trees. So I think we're up to 30 now. Those were removed, I believe, this week.
Thank you, Rob. Appreciate that also. Okay. With that, I'll bring it back to council now. And I'll either entertain a motion, and we'll also have discussion if there's no motion, but there'll always be discussion. And so I'm prepared to move item C1 to receive the quarter four 2021 WRF quarterly update report with the input that's been provided. Number two, authorize the city manager to approve amendment number six to the WRF design bill agreement. Number three, authorize the city manager to approve amendment number two to the agreement with Waterworks Engineers LLC. Number four, direct staff to continue due diligence to determine whether bridge financing is needed to keep the WRF construction on track, given slow and unpredictable SRF reimbursement timelines, and when appropriate, bring back to council proposals or recommendations if bridge financing is needed. Number five, direct staff to review tree replacement options for trees removed as part of the WRF project with the Planning Commission and Public Works Advisory Board, and return to City Council with a finalized tree replacement plan and associated budget for implementation as soon as possible.
I'll second that.
All right then. Motion by Mayor Heding for the staff recommendation with some very minor changes. Second by Councilmember Barton. And any hands for discussion? Councilmember Addis first, and then Councilmember Heller. Thank you.
I want to appreciate this discussion around the trees because it is one of the things that can pull carbon out of the air, with the understanding that it is incredibly expensive. So I look forward to seeing that budget. But I'm also wondering if staff knows, and I don't need the answer right now, but if there's any kind of grant opportunities or other funding out there, given the expense to replace trees, given our need for trees in other areas of the city, and given, I would say, our universal love for having trees in our city, how else could we fund this besides typical funding?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Addis. I don't know of any grant funding to replace trees at this time. That's certainly that my staff, that's certainly something that my staff and I can research.
That's it for me, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis. Councilmember Heller, I saw your hand, sir. Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. While we're on trees, let me just say, I agree with the comments from the community and the council with respect to the importance of trees. I think it would be helpful if staff could either do an aerial photograph or some kind of simple mapping showing which trees have been removed that were part of the original permit from the coastal commission, which additional ones have been removed, and perhaps a projection of future trees that might be removed, and identify those and separate those from the stumps that have been there before. Just to clarify that, if the staff could do something like that, I think that would be very helpful for the members of the community that are concerned about this. It's unfortunate that the coastal commission cares primarily about how many trees you move and doesn't require them to be replaced. I think it really, the onus is on the city to enforce our own vegetation policy and ordinances and replace trees. And I think that the project, the work program, should be responsible for the financial impact of that. It's just the right thing to do. You know, I was driving down Main Street the other day, and there's a big sign there, Morro Bay's a tree city. Well, if we're going to be a tree city, we need to act like a tree city. And I think it's important that we do the appropriate replacement. And Greg, I want to thank you for your research on this issue. And I also want to thank you for your suggestion about the trees on Morro Bay Boulevard. That is something we need to tackle. Either we need to find money to repair the sidewalks and allow those trees to exist and to keep the streets cleaned up, or they probably need to be replaced long term. So I appreciate you bringing that into the discussion. What else? Yeah. So I think those are my, those are my primary comments about the trees. And it is important to the community for all the reasons that have been discussed. Going back to the bridge financing option, there's a note in there about whether or not CFAC would review the, your findings that the staff comes up with. I think, and they volunteered, I listened to the meeting, they volunteered to call a special meeting on very short notice in order to do that. And I think the CFAC has some very qualified members, and it would behoove the city to get another set of eyes on there and see what their comments are. Make the time, I think it'd only take a day or two to have a special meeting and get their comments. So I think it's very important that the CFAC look at it. Yes.
I agree with that. I'll just interject, if you wouldn't mind. In my original motion a couple of years ago, with regard to the responsibilities for CFAC, I specifically included one key item was to review the cash flow and spending associated with the WRF program. So my assumption was that will happen automatically, sir. Thank you.
Great. Okay. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you for that. What else? I appreciate the efforts that Perolo and the management team is doing to try and speed up that portion of the project, the recycle portion project, which is a year behind schedule. I have to say, it's going to be hard for me to support this amendment because I still have a real problem with a program that is supposed to be a guaranteed maximum price. 50% of it at least was supposed to be a guaranteed maximum price. And that is now $15 million over budget, and the entire program is nearly $20 million over budget. And the community members who ask, when is it going to end? I have the same question. So I'm very concerned and probably will not approve this today. So that said, thank you all for your, for your work on this and the comprehensive staff.
Thank you.
Report.
Any other comments from council? Okay. Seeing none, I will go ahead and ask for a roll call vote, please.
The member Addis?
Yeah, yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
No.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion to Page 31.
Thank you for that good discussion. That brings us to item C-2. This is a consideration of a free concert at Cloisters Park on a trial basis. For that, I think I will be turning that over to Mr. Collins, please. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Make a brief presentation here. So again, this is a consideration of a free public concert at Cloisters Park on a trial basis. We recommend that City Council discuss the proposed free public concert event at Cloisters Park and correct staff to move forward with the support and planning for such an event to take place on October 24, 2021. I think I got the actual day of the week wrong on that, so I'll have to clarify. The cost of this proposed one-time event would be approximately anywhere between $5,000 to $10,000, not including staff time. These costs are not currently budgeted for this fiscal year. So if City Council were to approve this one-time event, we would bring forward a budget adjustment at mid-year and seek to use funds from the Economic Development Fund to support the event. By matter of background, Council directed staff to work with a Cloisters resident group to evaluate, bring forward to council the potential musical event series to be offered for free in Cloisters Park to begin this fall. The group is proposing that the city host this free outdoor event at Cloisters Park to enhance the cultural offerings to our community. They vision the concerts would be, include curated music offerings that typically cannot be found at local music venues, to include jazz, world music, reggae, dance, et cetera. The goal is to expose the community to a diverse array of musical offerings at no charge in a neighborhood-oriented outdoor setting that Cloisters Park provides. Since that time, staff has met with a couple of the organizers several times and to discuss event format, logistics, staffing, and other key considerations for a series like this. Based on those conversations and sort of where we're at with COVID and a bunch of other things, we would recommend that we, instead of approving a concert series at this point, to look at a one-time event and really just serve that as a trial basis to understand how, how things work, what the demand is in our community for such events like this, and to understand what sponsorships may look like and what other offerings could be provided to offset costs. So all those things, hopefully, we can ascertain both through this one-time event and also talking with some of our partners and the other cities in this county who offer similar concert events for their community for free. The event that's planned for October 24 includes LP and the Vinyl, which is a professional group, including jazz, blues, and gospel singer Leonard Patton and the acclaimed Danny Green Trio. I actually got to listen to some of their music with the event organizer, and they're fantastic. And they play a lot of covers, but in a non-traditional way, which we think folks would like in our community. So again, we are seeking council support to do this as a trial basis, to see how it goes, to see what we can learn from that, and bring back more information and other recommendations to council. recommendations to council likely sometime later this year, either November or December. So we do have several of the members of the Cloisters group who would like to speak in public comment, just to talk about kind of their view of this. And we're happy, Staff Kirk, myself, happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. So I just wanted to be clear for the rest of council. So you're not asking for the staff recommendation at present rather than taking place on October 24th? You want to bring it back for one more look?
No, I'm sorry. We want to have the event and then bring it back after the event.
Okay.
Sorry, that was not clear. Yeah, instead of having, kicking off a series, we would rather do a one-time event on a trial basis, see how it goes, see what we learned, and then share that information with council to decide if we want to move forward with a concert series next year.
Okay, thanks. Sorry, misunderstood.
Thanks for the clarification, yeah.
You bet. All right. So I will go ahead and open it up for council questions. Looking for raised hands from anybody out there. Councilmember Heller, I see your hand in the upper left corner, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And if the folks are online, it would be great. I'm just curious about who the Cloisters resident group is exactly, who wants to put this on, and wondering how the neighborhood feels about musical concerts that can be loud. And then my other question is, so the funds for this would come from the Economic Development Fund. What is the, and I should have asked this in advance probably, but roughly what is the balance of the economic fund, development fund? What is the budget?
It's in a several hundred thousand dollar range. So Sarah could speak to that, but it's.
That's all right. I just wanted to know that. I don't know that off the top of my head. Those are my questions. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, and I think that the folks and attendees that would speak public comment could introduce themselves to Councilmember Heller and speak to that issue about noise and stuff.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Great. Other council questions? Looking for hands? Seeing, okay, seeing no hands? I will go ahead and just ask just a couple clarifying questions. I talked to some folks in San Luis Obispo because they have reinstituted, let's see, Mission Plaza concerts, which are very successful. One of the questions I had was location. One of the, I think, successful things in San Luis Obispo is the proximity of local vendors and the offshoot of folks that attend afterwards then frequent some of the retail areas. And I just was wondering about your thoughts, Scott, with regard to having this in the Cloisters and then really not having close proximity or access to spin-off retail spending, and if you had any thoughts or conversation.
Yeah, we talked about that, and there's been discussions in the past about concerts at Tylenol's Park, which is down near Barcadero. And I think what this group has brought forward, and it's the individuals who have connections to the talent, want to have it in a community park to make it really for our community. Of course, members or visitors to our community can also attend, it's open to the public. But I think they were seeking more of a community atmosphere, and that's how Grover Beach does, and I think perhaps Bismarck as well, that they provide this in a city park and not in their kind of commercial district. So it's depending on what we're trying to go for. But those who brought this forward, who have a lot of the impetus and the passion behind it, are really wanting to center it in a community park.
Gotcha. And just wondering about parking, your thoughts about parking?
Yeah, that'd be something we would test out, both how the parking works there and what the staffing level is required to maintain that, and if some of those things could be portioned off to volunteers. So a lot of those questions, we're going to have to kind of answer through this one-time event.
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions. With that, I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. This is public comment and item C dash two on tonight's agenda. Public comment is now open. And Highland, do we have any public comments, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First up, we have Marion Libowitz.
Okay. Welcome, Marion.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor Heding. I'm Marion Libowitz, and I live in Morro Bay. I build bridges between performers, venues, and resources to create enriching experiences tailor-made to the community. My husband and I moved to the Cloisters 18 months ago, right before the pandemic started. From the moment I saw Cloisters Park, I thought it would make an amazing venue for great concerts. As I got to know members of the community, I found out that other residents were looking for a similar experience to share great music, sitting with our neighbors from all over Morro Bay while enjoying the beauty of the area. We banded together to form a committee to explore the possibility. Our committee included Dr. Gary Taft, Don Beatty, Jeff Bacon, and Red and Gail Davis. Since then, we have identified other residents of various Morro Bay neighborhoods who are interested in volunteering to get this project going. The collective members of the group have expertise in marketing, development, health, performance curation, concert production, student engagement, and volunteer management. You may ask, what is curated music? The performers we select are recognized by national and regional arts organizations and are representative of diverse cultures. I'll use the band proposed for October 24th as an example. LP and the Vinyl has been selected to perform at major national festivals such as the Telluride Jazz Festival and performing arts centers such as the Tempe Center for the Arts. Those venues have used work samples from LP and the Vinyl to apply for and win national and regional grants, such as from the National Endowment for the Arts. LP and the Vinyl's first CD received extensive airplay worldwide, rave reviews, and reached number eight on the Amazon New Releases in Vocal Jazz chart. LP and the Vinyl members are skilled educators who have impacted communities through workshops and outreach programs, such as the Quad City Arts residency in the Midwest. We are asking the city to fund our inaugural event so that we can determine the community's response. We have volunteers who would poll the audience through a survey. If it appears that the community wants a concert at the Cloisters Series in 2022, we will commence to find a partner organization to serve as the recipient of donations and sponsorships in support of our future plans while continuing to partner with the city of Morro Bay. On behalf of our entire committee, we thank City Manager Scott Collins and Recreation Services Manager Kirk Carmichael for their efforts to bring this proposal before you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Marion. Next public comment, I haven't had. Marion, if you'll maybe mute yourself?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up, we have Don Betty.
Okay, welcome, Don.
Greetings, Mr. Mayor. City Council, including Councilmember Heller, staff. My name is Don Beatty. I live in Morro Bay. For citizens and citizens, we perceive all the city worries about its tourists. What a great way to get back in a very healthy way for both mind and body, oh, and pocketbook. Perhaps I'm a bit biased as a part of the team that is hoping to put this on, but I can't think of a better combination of culture and scenery. One of our very own citizens, dinner named Susino, will be our emcee. Think of it, sitting outside enjoying Cloisters Park, listening to world-class music. What could be better? We hope this will be one of many such outdoor concerts. This first one is set to gauge the community's interest and has been designed at very low cost, count to city's sponsor. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you, Don. Highland, next public comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up, we have Jeff Bacon.
Welcome, Jeff.
Greetings, Mayor, City Council. Am I coming through okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My name is Jeff Bacon. I live in Morro Bay. I'm also a volunteer on the Cloisters and the Concerts Volunteer Committee, and you may ask why. Well, I've had the pleasure of catching live the artistry and the groove of the world-class musicians Marion has curated for us to hopefully enjoy. They're absolutely awesome. What a great opportunity our city has to test out, or I believe will become, an ongoing citywide event, or hang, as my musician friends would say. I'm in a picnic setting amid the gorgeous spaciousness of the Cloisters Park, the fresh ocean air, and a surreal place, it doesn't get any better. So I have a big thumbs up and hope that we get a chance to do this for you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Highland, next public comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no more raised hands in the queue.
Okay, thanks so much. I'll close public comment on item C dash two, and I will bring it back to council for discussion and/or motion. Looking for a raised hand? Or hand, yeah, hand. Councilmember Heller, I see yours first. Yes, please.
Yeah, so I still have a question about how the neighbors would feel about this if we do it over there, and I'm not sure the public comment addressed that issue. So that's kind of a question mark for me. I think it's a great location for an event like this. To piggyback on your comments, Mayor, about the economic development piece or the lack thereof, it's a good point, whether or not we should be using economic development funds for this when it probably, at least short-term, may not have an impact since it is a community-based event. On the other hand, I think the community-based event is a great idea, and I appreciate Scott Collins' comments about other cities who do this. I think it would be nice to have an event that really is just for the folks, pretty much for the folks who live here, and the Cloisters is a perfect place for that, as long as it doesn't negatively impact the neighbors and make everybody upset about it. But it sounds like a really professional group and an exciting thing to kind of try out. It could become a long-term regular event, which I'm very big on, and I'm not sure that we have a better place for events of this type than Cloisters Park in general. So in general terms, I'm pretty supportive of it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Barton, I see your hand. Please.
I am supportive of it as well, and especially since we've had several community events there lately, made me realize what a lovely gathering spot that is. It seems like a good idea to me. I wonder about the expense, but I think that having more music here would be more plus.
Great, thank you for that. Any other councilmember comments? Councilmember Addis, I see your hand. Yes, please.
I'll move approval. And I would echo the comments that have already been made. I have concerns about the cost. I have excitement about the idea of an outdoor event in Morro Bay. I have excitement about something to come into north Morro Bay. I think we could use some revitalization up here, and so I think the Cloisters is a great way to do that. And I would like to see, you know, try it out and see where we go, come back with that data that Councilmember Heller is talking about, how the neighbors receive it, if this truly is about economic development. But overall, I'd like to move approval.
A second.
Motion by Councilmember Addis for staff recommendation, second by Councilmember Heller, and thank you all for your summary comments. I will support this. I will echo a couple of concerns that have been raised. One, in looking at the San Luis Obispo model, not that everything needs to be the same as any other city, there is economic spinoff and sponsorships that actually pay for this, and I believe at literally no or very little city cost, and I'd be looking for some kind of model similar to that. Second, I think if we ever need to be together and dance and frolic and have a good time outside, this is the time to do it, and I need this celebration. And I'm seeing my councilmembers' faces light up. I'm ready to boogie, and so this is exciting to me, and I'm excited about the description of the culturally enriching experience that we're going to have with such a great band. However, I don't suspect that it will be an enriching experience for those of you who see me dance. So with that, I'll look forward to your support, excuse me, your report coming back, Mr. Collins, about this being hopefully a sustainable model that doesn't cost the city money and that develops sponsorships in the future. That can be a combination, a community, and also, and by community, I don't mean that this needs to be for tourists. San Luis Obispo residents actually participate and then frequent the restaurants and bars and all of the other retail areas around it. So that was more of the thought that I had, but I'll be looking for a model similar to that. But I am supporting the motion, and if there are no other comments, thanks to those of you that brought it forward. It's close to my heart that Councilmember Davis was a part of the initiating team for this, and I appreciate his heart and his desire to see the community come together as well. So with that, I'll call the question, please. We'll call the vote.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton? Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
All right, we're going to move from Dancing in the Streets to item C three. This is agenda item C three, to receive the plans for a community forum on Morro Bay power plant stacks. And I believe I'll be turning it over to Mr. Collins once again for that. Welcome back, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, community members. Brief presentation here. So yes, the item is to receive plans for a community forum on the Morro Bay Power Plant stacks, facts and figures, and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for professional services to coordinate with Vistra Corp. and regulatory agencies in responding to public questions and concerns regarding the exhaust stacks or stacks at the Morro Bay Power Plant. So recommendations are to receive the plans for the forum, and as we did earlier today during the special meeting regarding city goals, to encourage folks to participate in this event, which will be on Wednesday, September 8th, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. And the Zoom link is on the city website as well as the staff report for this item. And then last, authorize city manager to execute an agreement with Don Ruskin Company in a form approved by the city attorney to provide professional services to service the project manager for the engagement efforts related to this, and work with Vistra Corp. and regulatory agencies to be prepared to respond to the good public questions we've already received and concerns we've heard about the stacks. The proposed agreement is for an initial fixed fee of $24,000 with an option at the city manager's discretion to extend the agreement for up to an additional $24,000 to be determined upon the needs for further public engagement events to resolve the stacks issue. There is money in the existing Economic Development Fund for this year for consulting services, so there is no impact to this budget nor any impact to the general fund. By way of background, the Memorandum of Understanding with Vistra Corp., or Vistra for short, which was approved by council on June 9th of this year, specified the importance of meaningful public input and engagement regarding the future of the Morro Bay Power Plant site and the exhaust stacks. In that agreement, the power plant site is, if it's not demolished, I'd say by January 1st of 2028, the city will receive $3 million from Vistra with no strings attached. The agreement requires that the city inform Vistra by December 31st of 2022 if it chooses for the stacks to not be removed as part of Vistra's demolition of the Morro Bay Power Plant. So in other words, there's an option where council can consider, or the city can consider having the stacks maintained and the rest of the facility taken down in the future. So the purpose of this first community forum is really to provide information from Vistra and regulatory agencies about options for retaining the stacks and removing the stacks. And really, we're trying to help inform that conversation that's already been going on in our community with facts and figures to the best of our ability, both understanding the conditions of the stacks, concerns about liability and those kind of things, and what potential other uses could be in their place or how the stacks may be used in the future. So we're hoping all those great questions can be addressed through this presentation and engagement on September 8th. We've already compiled a list of questions, which we shared with the known presenter. compiled a list of questions, which we shared with the known presenters. We're also seeking information from those who can attend, including PG&E and the Coastal Commission, who wanted to be there but can't based on other arrangements or other things going on. So if the public has any questions or concerns they'd like to be addressed, that means they can email myself at scollins@morrobayca.gov, scollins@morrobayca.gov. We've already received several questions. They emailed it. I'll pass along to the presenters. And while the public may have questions about the overall future reuse of the Morro Bay Power Plant, this specific conversation is again focused on the stacks. So just want to make sure that's clear. And since it's important that we have this done well, this is a very important conversation in our community, I'm strongly recommending that we engage a professional to assist, somebody with the facilitation skills required to handle a very challenging conversation, a very emotional one, I should state. So we're suggesting that we partner up with Don Maruska and Company. He has a really good understanding of our community and is engaged in other discussions that had pretty strong opinions on both, on many sides. So we think he's well-placed to serve our community well in this discussion. So there is a proposal for a contract of $24,000 and the ability to go up more if we need to have future discussions with our community engagement opportunities. So I'm happy to answer any questions that council has, but again, the gist of this is that we want to make sure you're comfortable with having this forum, that we got the right questions, the right presenters, that there's support for that, and then also the, you know, do your best to get the word out. We've heard a lot of interest already, and I think the Stereobank News is running an ad for Thursday's edition as well. So I think we'll have pretty strong participation in the meeting, and then also authorize the city manager for the contract with Don Maruska. So happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, for that excellent overview and your report. Appreciate that. I'm going to go ahead and open it up, look for council hands to see if you have any questions. I'm Scott at this time regarding this proposal. Yes, Councilmember Heller, please.
Am I the only person with questions tonight?
Well, no, whoever pops up first always goes to my top box, and you're just fast on the draw. Did you go to Jeopardy and play Jeopardy at one time, or?
No, I would definitely lose very quickly. I really don't know anything. I would not win at all. So, thank you. Scott, thanks for bringing this forward. It is an interesting issue, and there's a lot of discussion in the community about it. The question I have in terms of how to move this thing forward is, will this, will this process, because for me, it's like, what is it going to cost from a first cost and liability perspective if the city wanted to keep the three stacks? Or I saw an email that came, but let's just keep one of them, you know? So to me, it's all about the cost, and will this exercise get us closer to knowing what the cost would be if we decide to keep them?
That is a fantastic question. I think that some of that can be answered and some of that can't, to the level of detail that we probably want. I don't know if that's possible this early on, but at least the understanding of liability and ownership, I think, is a pertinent question, and I think some of those could be addressed through this meeting. So at least it gets the ball rolling.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a great question. I think it's a pertinent one. So I think we'll get as best as we can to an answer on that on the eighth.
And the other question I have is, what is your sense of community in terms of their perspective on keep the stacks or don't keep the stacks? Do you have any sense at all kind of at the middle of it?
I think with a lot of big issues, it's about 50/50, you know, in Morro Bay. But I, that is my own, just as a completely qualitative, so I'm not, I haven't done a poll or anything like that, Councilmember Heller, and I imagine we probably would run a poll go poll on this at some point in the near future.
Okay, and then my last question is the regulatory agencies. So it sounds like Coastal Commission is too busy to weigh in on it. What other agencies would we be asking information?
Yes, so the, let me make sure I don't bomb this one, because I always get the words incorrect, but I know the shorthand for it. So the Department of Toxic-
Substance-
Substance Control. So I always go TTSI, but nobody knows what that means. So-
I do, but-
Yeah, there you go. You're one of few. And then the Slow County Air Pollution Control District, and then we're going to get input from Coastal Commission and hopefully from PG&E as well. So those, PG&E is obviously not regulatory, and then Vistra, since they own it and probably have a lot of that pertinent information you spoke of earlier.
So do you expect that we'll have the information from the regulatory agencies before the event that's coming up on the eighth?
We will have what they have at their disposal, and we'll answer all the questions that, you know, remains to be seen. You know, I think we'll get, we'll get a much better picture than what we currently have. And it really just started to try to level set what we know as staff and council know, that it's the same what our community knows, because we want-
Gotcha.
-that city to be informed by our community with perspectives that are grounded in reality, you know, and we understand the emotional connections on either side of the argument, whether they should stay or go. Those are, it's valid and very important, but we also want those perspectives to also be informed about the facts as much as we can, right?
That's super. That's exactly, I agree 100%. So, but there's no cost to the city to get that information from Vistra or from these regulatory agencies?
I don't know if there's a cost so much as what legally can be revealed, and I can't, I can't speak for Vistra's specifics, but we know those questions are pertinent. I think they understand our community has, you know, has reasons for wanting to understand that. So that's been reiterated to them, and this is where Don Maruska is very helpful, because he has a way with getting good information. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Those are my questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Appreciate that. Other council questions? Looking for hands, or a hand. Yes, Councilmember Barton, please.
I don't have a question. I just have a comment.
Let me, if you wouldn't mind, from a process standpoint, before your comment, I want to always go to public comment, and then I'll bring it back to us, and then I'll ask you for your comment. Great. Thank you so much. Seeing no other raised hand. I don't have a question, Scott, but I will have a comment, obviously, at the end. So with that, let me go ahead and go to public comment. This is public comment for item C-3 on the agenda. Any member of the public wishing to speak on this item, please do so now. And Highland, do we have a public comment for this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do not have any raised hands in the queue.
Okay, I will close public comment, bring it back to council, and say that, well, let me go to Councilmember Barton. You've got your hand up. I appreciate that. Please go ahead.
Okay. I just, I wanted to say that I appreciate the questions that have been brought up in the staff report. It's helpful to have some of these on, already bubbling around to help us get out of the go-no-go kind of a discussion that I've heard so much of. And so I think this will be helpful to everyone to know more about what's possible with the stacks and what's even reasonable to think about. So I just think that it's a helpful list.
Great, I appreciate that very much. Other comments? Or I'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Heller, yes?
Yes, thank you. Obviously, this is a hot potato here in town, and I think it's going to be a fun exercise for everybody and look at it. For me, I think the final kind of decision in my mind and what I would support, you know, has to do with the cost. And this is coming up very soon, but I would rather spend, if we're going to spend money on something to help move this forward, I would rather spend the $24,000 on hiring a structural engineer to do a risk analysis of the stacks and have that information part of the mix as opposed to paying a consultant to frankly just have more discussions and disseminate information, most of which I think the council and a lot of the staff members have already about what the options are. The big, the big option for me, or the big issue for me that I'm not, not decided or not clear about is the cost and the liability of keeping, keeping the stacks, and I'd like to spend money on that as opposed to hiring a consultant to manage gathering information.
Appreciate that very much. Councilmember Addis, I see your hand.
I would like to approve this item, and I think while council knows a lot, I do think it's important to bring the public together to hear their creative thinking, to share the information. I want to appreciate what Councilmember Heller just said about understanding the engineering, but I do believe this is on private property, and I don't know if we can just demand that kind of engineering from a private property owner. So I think it's important that we go through the public process, that we answer the questions, that we share the information that we may feel like we know well. And from that perspective, I think it's a go-slow-to-go-fast kind of situation, and so I'm okay with spending this money at this time and would like to move it forward.
Okay, so you might go ahead and make the motion then while you, okay, so you're moving the staff recommendation?
Moving it forward, yes. I thought I said that at the beginning.
You did, but I was sorry for being so formal, but I needed it in a formal motion, and I appreciate that. I'll go ahead and second it. Don and I are, Councilmember Addis and I are on the Vistra Subcommittee. We have talked about this at length and feel that we'll get a significant amount of the information that's necessary for, including, I think, a lot of what Councilmember Heller is looking for, hopefully from the owners of the property. And we have been pretty adamant about asking for that directly because of the potential for city liability in the future. Should we be relegated the opportunity to maintain these into perpetuity and/or have risk for taking them down in the future if they continue to be in existence and/or if there isn't that liability and/or costs associated with that, if they continue into perpetuity? And so, and I do, I have been involved with Don Maruska through the WRF process and through, I'm trying to remember, the LEAP program. I think he does an excellent job, and this is, there's some complex pieces to this that need to be addressed, and I think it's hard for the Subcommittee members, Councilmember Addis and I, to participate if we tried to facilitate it. And so we felt that it was important to bring in an outside facilitator to make this happen. And so for all of those reasons, I think it's an important community conversation, and I, and I do support the item. Thanks. So I will second that if I didn't say that. Any further comments? All right, hearing none. I will ask Dana, call the question, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
No.
And they are heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 3-1.
Okay, well, thank you for that. That brings us to our last item this evening. This is item C-4. This is awarding the City Wayfinding Signage Contract to Statewide Safety and Sign Incorporated for $188,200 and City Wayfinding Signage Program informational update. And I believe I'm turning it over to Mr. Leibig. Welcome, Rob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Yes, we are looking to award a contract to Statewide Safety for the fabrication and installation of the wayfinding signage. So based on some community input, the city's existing directional and wayfinding signage was determined to be outdated, and the city initiated a process to update the signs with the adoption of our Economic Development Strategic Plan, where this was identified as a top priority. The city staff, working with a design consultant, Pierre Rodemaker, and the chamber and tourism staff, developed the concept for the project, the location for all the signs, and the copy that would be included on the signs. The project was then turned over to Public Works for the installation of the signs. The city went out to bid with this project on July 12 and received four bids on August 12. We did receive bids ranging, for the base bid amount anyway, from $144,000 to $198,900. Unfortunately, the apparent low bidder failed to acknowledge an addendum that was issued on the project clarifying and pointing to spec sections that were of particular interest to some of the questioners on the project. When staff asked the low bidder to cure this discrepancy and submit the signed addendum, he stated that he would have to increase his bid by $40,000 if we wanted him to submit the addendum. We determined that was unacceptable and recommend that his bid be declared unresponsive and award to the next lowest bidder, Statewide Safety and Signs, for $188,200. So we're asking for the council to reject the bid from Detkan Construction Corporation as being non-responsive, award the contract to Statewide Safety, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract in a form, of course, approved by the city attorney, for $188,200, and direct staff to return at mid-year with a budget amendment to increase the project budget in the Economic Development Fund by $57,020, and this would include about $18,800 for project contingencies. When we did bid the project, we bid requested prices for two alternatives for the signs that would occur in the state right-of-way, Highway 1, Highway 41, and then also in state parks property. So far, those two state agencies have been, how do I put, less than excited about having additional wayfinding signage installed in their right-of-way. So we will continue to work with those two state agencies and likely need to return to council at next year's budget to, should we desire to still install those signs for a project to install the signs in state property in state right-of-way. That concludes my staff report, and happy to answer any questions on the signage.
Thank you, Rob. I appreciate it very much. I'll go ahead and open it up for council questions. Looking for hands. Is there any questions? Councilmember Heller, sir?
Yes, so there was some correspondence from a resident about the sign for the library, sign for the post office, and a sign for the city hall. Are these on the list of signs that are going to be replaced? Do you know?
We don't have any new signs that are direct, that specific directional in nature. I think the committee that worked on the sign, and maybe Scott Graham, who was the community development representative, we can talk more about this, on the designers' input about not putting these specific locations and limiting the type of copy on these signs. We do have existing signs in the right-of-way directing folks to those, and those can remain in place should we determine that we need that type of directional signage to get people to understand where the post office, the library, and other specific locations are.
So the question that came from the community members, will the current signs remain? Are they going to be taken down?
We can keep those signs in place. We are removing conflicting signs. So we've had, over the years, several directional sign programs. I think we still even have a few oldie-towny signs out there that would be removed, and these signs would be more general in nature and replace, you know, showing folks how to get to the waterfront, the downtown, North Morro Bay beaches, that type of direction, not specifically sending them to, you know, specific locations. I see Scott is on now to provide additional information. I see Scott is on now to, um, provide additional information.
I think, Rob, I think you answered all of the questions. Um, we, we did, you know, look at options. There's a limitation to the number of directional items that you can place on any individual sign. Um, the sign designer, Pierre Rodemaker, um, encouraged us to limit the number, uh, where possible to, uh, no more than four. Um, and so that's why we didn't include some of those items, uh, that were, uh, noted, uh, by correspondence received, um, on the signs.
Okay. Thank you for that. Uh, the other question I have is, so how many signs are we putting in for this?
At this phase, 51 signs will be going in.
Signs, okay. And so the locations are identified and the scope of work is pretty clear?
Yes, it is. Um-
Okay.
Uh, there's a, there's a variety of sign types. So there's, um, you know, larger signs for busier areas and then all the way down to pedestrian scale, um, signage, um, that, you know, the walking public will use. And then, um, probably the lion's share, although they are fairly small signs, are the, uh, partial, parking directional signs.
Okay. So we've got 51 signs. So my, my other question, the fiscal impact paragraph, if the scope of the work is clear, which it sounds like it is, um, and, and we're, uh, we've identified where they go, I'm not sure that I understand why we have a 10% uh, additional, uh, amount set aside for this project when the scope of the work is clear and it seems like a, shouldn't it, couldn't a fixed price contract work here?
It, it could. We did bid a few of the items as, um, um, by yard and by, um, square footage. So that can vary during construction. So we wanted to make sure that we had, um, sufficient funds should the amount of concrete, um, go over. Um, plus I think it's good practice to keep some additional money, um, um, available to, um, uh, for the, um, unknown unknowns, uh, paraphrasing, uh, Mr. Rumsfeld, uh, um, it's a, a quote about what, what, for projects, uh, uh, for things that we don't know about at this point in time.
You don't know.
We don't know what we don't know. Um, I, I believe it's a pretty straightforward project though. Um, they're, uh, metal and wood, um, posts that get, uh, you, where you excavate a hole in the ground and you put the sign in. Uh, so I, I think it's pretty clear, although we do have some variability in quantities for, um, asphalt and concrete.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you, Mayor, Rob and Scott.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Um, other council questions? Looking for raised hands? Seeing no raised hands. Okay. I'll go ahead and go to public comment. This is public comment for item C dash four under our agenda this evening. Public comment is now open. And Highland, um, any public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a raised hand from Erica Crawford. Erica, you have been unmuted.
Welcome, Erica.
Hi there. Thank you. Uh, nice to see you again, virtually. Uh, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council and City Staff. Uh, this is Erica from the Chamber. The purpose of my comments tonight, very brief, is to simply say thank you to you and especially to the Public Works and Community Development staffs for moving the citywide wayfinding signage program forward. As we all are aware, this is a project, three years and scores of hours of business community engagement in the making. We're delighted to see this item on your agenda and to seeing this project through to completion. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Highland, uh, next public comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no more commenters in the queue.
Okay, thank you. I'll close public comment. Cut myself off, bring it back to council. Um, I'm very supportive of this item. Um, I think the chamber has done a great job of evaluating this and has, um, indicated the need over, um, the last couple of years, done a great analysis, and I think this would improve, um, our, um, visitor and guest wayfinding significantly. And so I am supportive and ready to move item C dash four, um, to reject the bid from Deacon Construction Corporation as non-responsive. Number two, to award a construction contract for the fabrication and installation of the city's wayfinding sign program to statewide safety and sign incorporated for the base bid amount of 188,200 and no cents and authorize the city manager to execute said contract in a form approved by the city attorney. And number three, direct staff to return at mid-year with a budget amendment to increase the project budget in the economic development fund up to 57,020.
I'll second.
Motion by Mayor Heding for the staff recommendation, second by Councilmember Addis. Further comments or discussion? Uh, Councilmember Heller?
It's full of comments tonight, aren't I?
You are. And then Councilmember Addis.
Okay. So I am very excited about this. Honestly, I thought that the whole signage thing, wayfinding, has fallen off the radar. We've talked about it for so long. So this is really exciting that this is going forward. Uh, I totally support, uh, this, uh, item with the exception of one thing, and I don't know if a friendly amendment is the right way to suggest this or not, but I, I'm very concerned about the procurement practice of adding additional 10% to the bid price for project contingencies when the scope of the work is clearly defined. Uh, we know exactly where they're going to go. The odds are this contingency is going to get spent. The contractor is going to come back. Well, I ran into this, I ran into that, and that money is gone. And I just don't think it's necessary for this project. And it's a procurement issue that I have a problem with. So, uh, that's a lot of words for wanting if a friendly amendment might be considered that would exclude the, um, 10%, 18,120 from the, from the report.
Thank you. I'll, I'll go ahead to Councilmember Addis and then consider that. Councilmember Addis, please.
My comments before the, uh, front of the amendment? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. Or, or any comments? Yeah.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm so glad to see this move forward and I want to thank the chamber for sticking with it and thank staff for sticking with it. When I was campaigning, this was one of the issues that was coming forward and it's been a couple of years. And, um, I don't mean to mention the timeline as a criticism, but just to say I think it's a real celebration and it's a positive thing for Morro Bay and that's why I seconded the motion as the motion stands.
Good. Thanks. And I, I appreciate Councilmember Heller, um, not only your background, but, um, your fiscal responsibility and concern about that. Often I think these contingencies, if they're there, they do get spent. And so I, I'm actually happy to consider the friendly amendment and to, um, remove the contingency in my recommendation and ask staff to come back should there be overage for, um, requests for additional funds. And I would ask Councilmember Addis if you would support that.
I guess I'd like to know more from staff about how quickly we can move if we remove this contingency because certainly I don't want to belabor this thing, um, another year over, how much is the contingency? 18,000 dollars?
About 18,000 dollars, yeah.
Eighteen or eight?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Yeah. So I don't want to belabor this another year. I think there's a time value of money or value, time, you know, the value of time-
I know what you mean.
That I'm trying to say. And, um, and I appreciate as well, Councilmember Heller's vast experience in the area of construction and these kinds of projects. I do think, uh, public, I do think government serves a different purpose than business. And when government goes into getting a contract, we have a different lens and that's okay. That's why we're here. Uh, but I want to get this done and I think that if, if removing the contingency is going to slow us down, I would have a difficulty with that.
Appreciate that.
I'd like to know that.
Rob, you coming?
I, I don't think it'll slow us down at all. Um, I, I think there's just some minor risk of, um, if there is an increase in quantity for concrete, let's say, I think we estimated 210 square feet, um, and the low bid was 30 bucks a square foot. So I, um, 10% was, you know, just a typical number that we use. Um, I doubt if we would even come very close to that amount. And I think we could, um, uh, proceed forward with this contract with or without the amendment.
Councilmember Addis?
Yeah.
Oh, without, without the contingency. Sorry.
Yes, gotcha.
If that's the case, I would accept it. But I don't, I just say, I'll say it one more time. I don't want to slow down and I don't want to end up paying more because while staff is coming back to council to ask for an increase, somehow we see this, um, exorbitant increase in costs like we had seen with lumber during COVID where the increase of lumber went up 300%. It caused a lot of issues for people and I really don't want to get in that situation either.
Your comments are-
I just want to make sure of that as well, Rob, that, you know, if you have to come back and ask for more money, that we're not risking materials going up as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis. I, I absolutely concur with you and will just not change the friendly amendment, but just, um, request that staff, um, if there are any concerns that you're approaching the limits that have been set, that you come back in a timely fashion so as not to impact the schedule. Is that-
Yes, yes. Like I said, most of the items are lump sum, so there's no concern with the increase in cost. It's just the, um, surface improvements, um, and it's such a small quantity, um, I don't think it'll affect the project at all.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, Eric. Yeah, if I could, um, so to effectuate, uh, that desire to take out the 10%, uh, I believe that recommendation number three would just be changed from 57,020 to 38,200.
So amended. Councilmember Addis?
Yes, I'll second that.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate that. Quick math. Um, we do have a motion and a second with the amended recommendation. Is there any further discussion? And I will say thanks so much. I agree with Councilmember Addis and, uh, Councilmember Heller. Man, this is overdue. We want to see it happen. So important to the city. Um, our business partners have been telling this, us this for quite a while and I am so glad to see this come forward and, and want to see it happen quickly as well. So thank you, Rob and staff for making this, um, come forward to us and, and we're ready to move. So, if there's any other comments, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries four, oh.
Thanks again, Rob, and thank you for your great work. We appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
That takes us to item number D, Council Declaration of Future Agenda Items. Anything pressing that, um, you have for suggestions? Uh, seeing no hands for a while. That's great. Okay. We'll go ahead and end item D and, uh, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you so much for, um, your engagement this evening and the great dialogue. Um, the next regular meeting of the Morro Bay City Council will be held on Tuesday, September 14th, 2021 at 5:30 PM and that will also be via teleconference. Thank you. Be safe and be well. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.